I have 6:38 right now, so the Committee on Lands will call this public hearing to order. And it is Tuesday, September 20th, 2016. I want to go ahead and ask the mayor to open up this meeting, and then we'll proceed with the discussions. So you can go ahead and take the -- we're recording.
Senator Ada Spaldon Morrison, Speaker Wampat, thank you for coming down this evening for this public hearing. And to my visitors, welcome to this country. And to my constituents, thank you for being here this evening. And now is the time to voice a concern or anything. So I'm pretty sure they'll take good notes, and they'll go back and do some work, and they'll come back and advise us of the status of what's happening on our issues. Again, thank you for being here this evening, and you can start now the public hearings.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So our format tonight is I'm going to go ahead and I'll briefly go over the two bills that we're going to be discussing tonight. And then from there, we're going to open it up for the residents of Talafofo to give their testimony. And then we'll just take it till the last person has had an opportunity to give their testimony. I want to thank tonight with us Senator Spaldon, Speaker Wampat, and Senator Tommy Morrison. I also want to recognize the presence of Mr. Michael Borja, who is with the Department of Land Management, and Chief Planner, right? Martin? Yeah. Mr. Aguilar, Chief Planner for the Department of Land Management, and -- oh, and the Legal Counsel for Department of Land Management. I'm sorry, the name slips. Kristen. Okay. Thank you. The notice of this public hearing was provided to the general public, senators, stakeholders, and the local media on August 31st and September 2nd, and to meet meeting the requirements of the open government law. And we'll continue to receive testimony until 4:00 PM on Monday, September 26th. Please address a testimony to Senator Thomas Ada, Chairperson, Committee on Lands, and or you can mail it to office at senatorada@org. Tonight is the fourth of a planned series of seven public hearings to be held in the southern villages. So we've held one in Agad, one in Marizo, last night in Inarahan, tonight in Talafofo. Tomorrow it will be in Jotna, and then we go to Yamadaq. And on Friday, we wrap it up with a hearing down at the Guam Legislature. So I'll just quickly now go over real quickly the -- oh, but before we do that, I'm going to ask my chief of staff to give a quick overview of a bird's eye view of Talafofo as to, you know, what might be areas that might be affected by potentially by development. So he can go ahead.
This is a map of Guam with the municipal lines shown on the map. Sometimes when we think of places like Sanarita and Talafofo, we think basically of the villages. But Talafofo is probably one of the six largest municipalities. And here's a little close-up view. Try and remember the shape of the -- back to the next one, Pete. Next one. Yeah, try and remember the shape of the municipality. This is the municipal lines. Over here you have Talafofo Bay, and as you can see, Talafofo is quite large. It's maybe the second largest, if not the largest municipality in southern Guam. It borders San Jonia, Sanarita, Agad, Yamadaq, and Inarahan. Next slide, Pete. Next one. And if you can make out the red line, the red line here are the municipal lines. As you can see, the village itself probably occupies maybe a quarter of the total municipality. And like I said, it goes all the way down to Yamadaq. So it's a big municipality. The municipal lines, of course, are set by law. And if you see a lot of these jagged lines as opposed to these straight lines, that usually means that the municipal boundary is a river. That's why the lines are jagged like that. And again, you've got the village itself here. You've got Ipana. And the green markings are properties that belong to tomorrow land trust. For example, this one is right across Ipana Beach, Ipana Public Beach, and these are areas across and near the fire station on the back entrance to Talafofo, Lot 48-R1. Next one, Pete. And this is a Google review on it, these developments here, the village itself, and then you have Ipana, you have the golf course, and you have Jeff's Pirate's Cove here, and you have Elik Bay, Elik River. And again, as you can see, a great piece of the municipality is basically undeveloped in certain kinds of land. And then you have Fena Lake here, but Fena Lake is right on the border of Talafofo. Maybe a little bit of it at this end is in the village of Talafofo. And that's basically what we have in Talafofo. Developments that you have in Talafofo are basically that big golf course, and then you almost have a commercial strip in front of Jeff's Pirate's Cove and the golf course going down here. You have your gas station and like that. So that's kind of like your commercial strip in Talafofo.
Thank you very much, Mr. Borja. So signing up Talafofo residents who have signed up is Mr. Ruffo Luhon, Mayor Taidegui, and Mr. Wayne Ojoa. So we've got a couple of chairs up here. If you don't mind, I'll go ahead and defer to the mayor and have him start off. So we are recording this visually and audibly, so you won't see me taking any notes, but I got staff that's taking notes.
Good evening, everybody. For the record, my name is President Pete Taidegui, Mayor of Talafofo. In the past, many decisions have been made that have impacted our village without the initial approval of the district NPC. The creation of the Southern Development Master Plan will ensure that the mechanism will be in place before any major development is approved. The intent of Bill 366-33 and 365-33 is to control future major development in the South until the Southern Development Master Plan is fully implemented. Again, I support the intent of Bill 365-33 and Bill 366-33. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And you know, whenever I go off script, I always mess up. I was supposed to go over and give an overview of the bill. So let me just do that. I got like just four PowerPoint slides. Real, take less than a minute, honest, once we get started up. So the first -- okay, Bill 365. Can you give me the first slide, Peter? Okay. So the major points on Bill 365 is basically that when a land use application is received at Department of Land Management, we want to ensure that a copy of that land use application is provided to the municipality of interest. So if the land, if the development's going to be here in Talafofo, then the mayor of Talafofo should get a copy of that, in addition to the members of the Application Review Committee getting copies of it. The next major point is that we want the Municipal Planning Council meetings to be informed by the findings of the ARC. And as I understand it, it doesn't always work that way. Sometimes the Applications Review Committee, they do their expert analysis and come up with their findings and conclusions, but that information doesn't necessarily always get to the Municipal Planning Council. Sometimes Municipal Planning Council conducts their meetings before the ARC is finished. And it would probably be ideal if the Municipal Planning Council meeting is held and at the same time is informed by the findings of the ARC. And that way, the people who are then in attendance will be able to listen to the expert findings and also express themselves, as well as that of the developer. And finally, the bill requires that the representatives of the Application Review Committee be present at the Municipal Planning Council to respond to questions regarding their findings and recommendations. So that will really be the major points of Bill 365. For Bill 366, Bill 366 basically calls for moratorium on development. And this bill is really more a complementary to Public Law 33-145, which was introduced by Senator Tommy Morrison. And that particular bill calls for the development of the Southern Development Master Plan. And so we basically, what Bill 366 does is it will impose a land use moratorium for a period of two years or until the master plan is completed, whichever comes first. The applicability of this moratorium will apply to all the seven southern villages, Sanarita, Agad, Yamadaq, Marizo, Inarahan, Talafofo, and Jotna. And the moratorium will basically put a halt to the issuance of building permits, the issuance of licenses for the use of land or buildings, for the issuance of variances, and then also will put a halt on the creation of planned unit developments. Now, there are, there is a section in the bill which provides for variances from the moratorium. And basically what that is, is that if there's a development that really needs to get underway and we cannot wait, or at least the developer feels that we cannot wait until, you know, that two years is up or until the master plan, then the option is given to go to the Guam Land Use Commission and ask for a review. The only difference is that it's going to require, whatever their findings are and their decisions, is going to require the concurrence from the legislature. Now, we don't want to put a stop to everything. So for example, then there are exemptions to the moratorium, and that is the -- oh, shit. Oh, the, we will not, we will not put a halt on the construction of single-family homes or minor additions to homes, so people can continue to construct their homes. And if an application has already been approved, then that really, that project has got to be allowed to go through. Okay? And so that basically then is the overview of the two bills, 365 and 366. Okay, so Mr. Luhon.
Thank you, Sandra. Okay, I would like to state that I agree with the concept of both bills. And okay, it's good that you're holding this hearing because it awakens the interest of the, you know, southern villagers. Senator Morrison should be commending for stopping that development in Agad, not only for stopping it, but it was also being proposed to be constructed on wetlands. You know, that whole seashore across from the agate basin, the Agad Basin, is all wetlands. In fact, that, what's that, Talisa area, that's all wetlands. That used to be rice, you know, rice paddies during, before World War II. And you know, even in World War II, the Japanese used that as rice paddies for the production of rice. So that whole place is wetlands. What really needs to be done now is to, I guess, pass, you know, a, well, if you pass this bill, enforcing, requiring that the master plan be developed, that would be a step in the right direction. When the Itamota Land Use Plan was abandoned, that created a big problem, you know, for the development, for the proper development on Guam. And since then, I think that what happened is that we have a malfeasance or dereliction of government agencies in complying with the laws. I see, I used to sit on the Land Use Commission, so I'm very well aware of the subdivision laws or the land use laws of Guam. And I see, I go around the island, I see all sorts of violations. I see constructions being done on wetlands. I see ponding basins being backfilled, natural ponding basins being backfilled so that a contractor can, I guess, increase his profit margin. And you know, this is happening in Talafofo. If you come down from Notre Dame, right at the base of the hill, on your right side, you'll see a fenced area at the intersection of Route 4A and Cabrera Street. It's fenced. That was cleared and the backfill, you can see the volume of dirt that was moved to backfill that natural ponding basin. Because you can see at the back part of that property, about maybe four or five feet of dirt that had been, you know, bulldozed and moved to the front of the property to increase the, I guess, usable development. Also, if you're coming in from Route 4A, I mean, from 17 to 4A, right on your left side, you'll see houses that are being constructed on wetlands. In fact, the construction has already occurred, and you know, I've called certain government agencies to inform them of this, that, you know, these properties are being constructed, houses are being built, and no mitigations being taken to protect the wetlands. If you, here in Talafofo, you see a lot of violations of the subdivision law. Right before, from that development that I told you on Route 4A, when you go up the hill, you'll see a subdivision on your left side before you get to the golf course. Okay? That, that is a subdivision that was, that was constructed again without, you know, the appropriate application to the Land Use Commission. So, you know, I agree that this, you know, this should be taken, and a moratorium should be taken, and a stop should be put on a lot of these developments that are occurring. And also, government agencies should be held accountable for their actions. I can, I can take you and I can show you, you know, all these violations. I can, I can take the government agencies, and I can show them, I can point out all these violations that are occurring, because I drive around the island and I see all this. I mean, it bothers me because either this, the government agencies, government employees are just deriding their duties, or they don't care, or, God forbid, that, you know, they're not being bribed. And, you know, I would, that's a, you know, strong accusation, but I feel that that is what's happening, because I see one particular individual, okay? And you can go down to Ipana, go down to Ipana, drive up on cruise heights, and you'll see all this subdivision, all this development that's occurring, all by one person, all by one person, and the road is a one-lane gravel road. And the subdivision that I mentioned on Route 4A, over towards 17, it's all by the same gentleman.
On scene?
Yeah. So, you know, it's, like I said, it concerns me that you have unfettered, unfettered, I guess, ignorance or ignoring of the subdivision laws. I really support this, and I hope that the development of the subdivision plan will be rushed, because two years is too long. You know, two years is too long. And of course, you already have the old Itamota Land Use Plans that can be used as a model, although I don't agree with a lot of the sections there, because the Itamota Land Use Plans created what they call the multi-use districts within, you know, within your village so that you can have apartments, single residences, commercial, all within, you know, a certain area. And I disagree with that. It may work for an area where you have a lot of land, a lot of resource, but not on an island with scarce resource. My other concern to Senator is, again, you know, the requirement for this master plan is the need to protect the northern waterlands. I know you're talking about the south here, but what happens up north also affects us down here. You know, the Guam is so small that what happens in Jigo is felt in Talafofo. We get our water from up there. Talafofo gets its water, Ipana gets its water from Ugun, but the village gets its water from Jigo. Okay? So the need to protect the northern waterlands is great. The over, I think about 80% of the island depends on that northern waterlands for its water source. Yeah? So it is, it is, you know, incumbent on government agencies and you as the policymakers to pass a law to protect that northern waterlands. Something has to be done to curtail development up there. You cannot continue to have development occurring up north without affecting the entire island. Yeah? Sorry that I went free-wheeling, but you know, I wanted to come here and express my concern about all this, like I said, unfettered actions taken by, or not being taken by the government agencies that are allowing violations of Guam laws and subdivision laws to occur. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And just for the record, Mr. Luhon, in your previous life, you were director of, was it Land Management?
Yeah, Land Management and Agriculture.
Okay.
Yeah, and Land Use Commission.
And you sat on the Land Use Commission. Okay, great. Thank you very much. Does anybody have any, anybody on the panel have any questions of these two gentlemen? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to comment real quick. I agree, Mr. Luhon, that two years may be too long, and I've been working with the chairman on ours through the public hearings throughout the South, and that has been brought up as well. I just want to note that within Public Law 19-38, it does require that at the commencement or the convening of the task force, that they have a year to submit a master plan before the legislature. So certainly, I know there is stipulation with the two years, but I hope that we have met, we've been with the mayor, present there at the first meeting, that we can convene as soon as possible. So I thank you for bringing that up. Thank you.
Yeah. One further point. You know, the Application Review Committee was established by an executive order. Prior to the executive order, it was by statute. It was by statute, and then in 96, okay, the executive order was promulgated, which mandated that. And, you know, for a person who likes to see, I guess, orderly governance, I just don't like executive orders. And I hope that you would pass a law, okay, to again reinstate the Application Review Committee by statute, by statute. When I was on the Land Use Commission, it was by statute, okay? And it was only in 96, after I got off the Land Use Commission, that it became established by executive order.
Great. Thank you. And I understand Senator Spaldon said he's on that already. Thank you. Mr. Luhon, because of your experience with the government, I just need to ask the question because I don't know the answer. Is a two-year timeframe realistic in terms of developing a Southern master plan? And because the concern here, I mean, and when I ask that question, is that the way the law, this proposed law is written, that it's two years or the Southern, when the Southern master plan is completed, whichever comes first. And so if it's an unrealistic timeline in terms of two years, then what would happen is, of course, the moratorium is lifted without a land use master plan. And so the question is, with, because of your background and your understanding of issues on this island, is two years realistic? Actually, I think we're, yeah, is two years realistic to come up with a land use master plan for the South?
You know, I think that it can be realistic if you work with the different municipal planning councils, because the input of the councils is going to be very important to this. I know that it, you know, it's a short timeframe, but then again, you can also have like an, you know, pass an interim, an interim master plan pending the development of a final master plan.
Thank you. I appreciate that answer.
Senator, after the resignation, I think all the members will get together and get a chairman for the Southern Development Commission, and we'll get it going so we could chart on our course of action, so as Spaldon will not delay. And we're looking forward for that. And I'm pretty looking forward for that event.
All right. And I just also want to say that the bill as introduced, um, is constantly evolving based on the information that we get from the public hearings. So, um, ultimately, by the time we finish the public hearings and before we report it out, we will be making more changes. And we'll make sure, if we have your email for those who have attended the hearings, we'll make sure that we send out copies of the, um, amended version of the bill. Okay? All right. Thank you very much. The next one that has signed up is, uh, Mr. Wayne Ojoa. Ricky, can you just, or can we just move the, a little bit? Yeah, can't see the TV screen here. Or put the TV screen on. I don't have enough budget to reverse it. And while we're waiting, I, I, for the record, I do want to, um, recognize the present South Senator Underwood. Sorry. Thank you. Better late than never. Don't worry. I mean, screwing up a week.
Good evening, senators, and welcome to God's country. Uh, thank you for, uh, honoring us with your presence here. Speaker Wampat, Senator Ada, Senator, uh, what's going on? Senator, I'm sorry, Senator Underwood.
So, so for a minute before you start.
I apologize.
So, before you start, Mr. Ojoa, can we maybe reposition that so that the audience can also, uh, get the benefit of seeing the, the, um...
Can you see it?
Maybe a little closer to the screen, and that way the panel can see it as well as Okay, that should do it, I think. Okay.
Okay, and, uh, also, thank you, Mayor, for honoring us with your presence. Um, my name is Wayne Ojoa. I'm a resident of Talafofu. I'm here tonight in this public hearing to, uh, represent myself as a concerned resident of Talafofu, a landowner, and, uh, to represent my family members who can't be here, as well as the neighboring landowners who, uh, are unable to attend but, uh, support my views on this. And, uh, just to start off, I wanted to say, uh, this is the property that Mr. Luan was talking about as you're coming in from Route seventeen onto Route four A. This development here, I have a little bit of knowledge of it because of my, uh, experience up at agriculture. This is the, the development that they're talking about. This is the second, I believe, the second home that was built there. And in the process of this second home being built, because there was a language barrier between the contractor and the, uh, the inspecting board, he did not know that he wasn't supposed to push all his overburden onto the wetlands that were back here in this area, as you can see in this cut area. Now, I believe the gentleman was silent for that, and that was based on a language barrier. Uh, and he, uh, for whatever reasons, he apologized for the whole thing, and, uh, I guess they sorted it out one way or another. Okay, but, uh, in regards to Mr. Luan's comments, there are three developments in Talafofu that are... Well, I'm gonna go through the interview real quick just to show you what he's talking I think this is the other area that he's talking about is, uh, in Rancho Comacho, if I'm correct. Is it? No, not, not Rancho Comacho, the one on the...
Go back, please. Go, go, go back, back, back.
Further back.
Yeah. Further back, please. Look right past the, uh, the, yeah.
This one here?
Uh, right at the top.
Over here?
The, the top, yeah. That's the subdivision.
This one here? Oh, okay, this one here, yeah. Just past that development. Okay, that's one, and then the other one you were saying is by Notre Dame, correct?
Yeah, Notre Dame, the one, uh, back to it.
Yeah, that's the biggest clearing that we have so far in this area. And this is the area he's talking about right here. Uh, currently, there are plywood boards and fencing that's going around it because the neighbor complained of, uh, dust and stuff flying over to them. It was bothering, uh, bothering the breeding of one of the kids who had asthma. So, um, going back to, uh, my presentation is, I am in support of both three sixty-five and Bill three sixty-six to a certain degree, and, uh, I will iterate them here with you and then I'll go over my presentation so that everybody can see what I'm talking about. Okay, on, um, Bill three sixty-five, we'll go to page one, section one. In that body there says the, uh, the ARC is critical component of the Guam Land Use Commission application process because it provides the professional review, analysis, and advice to development. The question and suggestion that I have there is, why aren't the federal counterparts of the local government agencies listed in section one included in the art process by conducting their own studies and analysis, then providing the documentation and testimonies of their findings? And this is what, uh, this also is in relation to three sixty-six, the same, uh, suggestion and comment as we go along. I'm gonna go on to page two of line, uh, line eleven reads, "Elisatua Guahan intends to ensure that nominational, nominational public hearing shall be scheduled until such time that the art, the ARC position statements are received by the Department Land Management Planning Division and transmitted together with the land use, with the land use application to the mayor's office." Here's my suggestion to that, and this is based on experience and, uh, current issues that are ongoing. I strongly suggest that it be entered into the body of this bill that the surrounding landowners who are affected by the development in the given municipality must be notified, I mean, identified and notified in written, in writing prior to public hearings, and that the ARC position statements, along with the land use application, also be transmitted and received by the surrounding landowners as well as the mayor's office of that given municipality. My suggestion is thirty to sixty days prior to the municipal public hearing. And the reason why I'm saying that within that time period is because, you know, in a perfect world, we would like to say that everybody, as you send out mail, they get the mail, and if we have to go a little further to ensure that they get it, certify it, for whatever reasons, uh, things tend to fall through the hoops. And in, in my family's case, that's what happened, okay? And we'll, I'll show you exactly what I'm talking about when I'm done with my written testimony. Now, with Bill three sixty-six, I'm in support of the moratorium henceforth until the southern, a southern development plan has been developed and approved. I will again mention here that the federal counterparts to our local government regulatory agencies should be included into the southern development master plan. And going back to your question, I know it wasn't asked of me, but if you don't mind, I would like to say that with all the different agencies I've seen within our own government, that they have struggles to meet, uh, to work together, um, you know, uh, for whatever reasons it, it may be. Now, to include that, in my experience, I've seen that the federal side of the House is, uh, how do we say it? They, they nitpick at more things than our local government. And the reason why I'm in favor of that is because of the issue again that's going on currently with my family's land, okay? Um, page two, section two, line seven through twenty. "I am not in favor of the temporary moratorium of two years. I prefer until the southern development master plan has been developed and approved." That's what I'm in favor of because, uh, I would, in my case, I'm thinking that we need this, uh, master plan in order to prevent any more of what's going on with me and my family's land to anybody else on our island, because it's a great insult to the indigenous people and the people who have held that land for a long time. My great-great-grandfather had held on to that land, you know, he was a gambler, he drank, he traded land for caribou, he lost a gambling game, he gave away a piece of land, but he held on to that particular land so that it can come down to me. I'm a father of six now. On that land, I've learned, I'm a hunter, I'm a trapper, and it's all by upbringing. I cling to my culture, I, this was my upbringing. So I teach these things to my kids, and in the current state that the land is, it would, uh, if you were the landowner, you would be very bothered by it, okay? I'm going through the trials and errors right now of trying to learn more about land use, land laws, who can help me, who can't help me. So, um, on page two of section three, li- uh, line twenty-one to twenty-five, "I'm not in favor of that part of the section that shall default to approval if the legislature fails to take action within sixty days." And the reason why I say that is because I'm gonna ask you senators, because they say it defaults into approval if you, the legislators, can't meet it in sixty days. So I say you guys throw a time limit in there of how long you think it takes, because I guess I know from experience that if you guys are going into session next month, I can use that as a loophole and throw it in there at this time, because you guys are too busy trying to get your budget hearing together, you're too busy in session, and I can meet the sixty days and you guys won't have time to review it, so I'm gonna be able to get past all that and get it approved. You know, as what, uh, Mr. Luan was saying is, uh, the verences to the buildup that you were talking about is for single-home dwellings. We have these mass, uh, investors, off-island investors who are investing in our properties around here, buying it up and building and making violations such as that. And I understand that the men, the gentleman had a language barrier, but, uh, if we're gonna proceed forward with this variance, I suggest, I didn't write it there, but if any developers, um, violate any of our local laws as far as development goals, that there should be some sort of clause in there that says, "Well, now the moratorium applies to you because you violated it." Because I'm sure that when they got their building permits and they got their development license and certificates and everything, it was well-understood for some reason, somewhere along the way they attained it. They just don't go up there and pay for it and get it. There had to be an understanding of conditions met to that development, okay? And even some of the scenarios that they look at, you and me can look at that blueprint and we won't understand what it means, but they do. Because, uh, you know, I guess that's an engineering mind to look at it. So, I'm sure it's, that's one, one of my conditions. And in addition to that, "Based on my family's ongoing experience with regard to developments surrounding our land, negative impact of serious erosion on the embankment and flooding damage to our inland property, none of these issues has ever been a problem prior to the surrounding developments. Oh, not to forget the continuing trespassing private property and the stealing of private property, uh, by employees of the surrounding developments, several times caught in the process of harvesting our fruits, picking up our traps, and resource like palm leaves and wood, and the stealing of the bounty from our traps. A great disrespect to my family, myself, and our culture. For these reasons, I add that Bill three sixty-six be inclusive to the post, a post-study analysis of five-year increments of up to twenty-five years." Thank you, Wayne Ojoa, family Talafofu residents. Okay, and the reason why I say that post-study after all of it is bec- again, because of the ongoing stuff that's going on with my, uh, family land, and I'm about to present that to you real quick here. Here we go, this is the Talafofu River. As you see, it sneaks up here. This is the Ugan River going up, and this is, this is the other one that goes into Babula further up. Okay, headed towards Route seventeen, Naval Mac area. Now, just from that picture alone, I'm not sure if you guys can take a good look, but tell me what the difference is from the bridge as you go further in. Follow that river and, to me, it's plain as the eye can see. The river is wider outside. As you go up that river, it disappears, you can't even see where the river goes. Up further where the boat doesn't travel, the river is the same way it's been decades and decades ago. It's never changed. The only thing that has changed in that river is that area where the boat travels. And I know you senators paid that riverboat crews a visit to look at the erosion issue, and I thank you for that. However, since two thousand and seven, I've been back on this island and I've been asking, I wrote a letter to Mr. Kruppenberg, I've delivered it to his, uh, office, and I deliver it to the guys on his boat. And even on the internet, if you search the internet, go to YouTube and put jungle riverboat crews Talafofu, all over YouTube, you see it. On our ranch, it's the only tin ranch that's in there, and this is my ranch, right here. This is actually my dad's land, not mine. I'm, I, I keep saying it's mine, but it's not. On the side of this ranch, there's a tin wall that faces the river. All along here, we've put signs all along the bank. I did this when I came back because I was astonished with what I've seen about the size of the river. I was gone since two thousand and one and came back in two thousand and seven. With my astonishment, I couldn't believe the river was that wide. And it's only where the boat travels. I did a little research and I found out that when they pass for the riverboat crews to, uh, be allowed to go navigate the river for a jungle adventure, we were all excited about it, no problem. It's okay, he wants to make money, fine. But we didn't know any better that the boats are supposed to be traveling at a certain amount of knots and that they're supposed to use a certain kind of engine, which is what they call a surface pusher. What they have on their boats are deep prop pushers, okay? And we see these boats go in and out, especially during the low tide and the minus tide. It creates this man-made wake from the boat that cuts the land, the riverbanks, creates the land to look like a, sort of like a tsunami or a wave until the land can't support itself anymore and it falls into the river by feet, Senator, by feet. I've seen that land fall into the river by four feet right in front of our land, right in front of our ranch. And then, um, Mr. Luan, who's one of my neighbors, his property here, I've seen it fall the same way, by feet, by so many feet falling into the river. And they jump our land thinking that there's a ten-foot, uh, government saying that ten feet from the highest waterline is government. It's not. Our landmark is in the river. We've lost twelve feet of land since I've been back in two thousand and seven, twelve feet of land. Right now, we're trying to figure out how, how to come up with ten thousand dollars to have the survey, survey, because Guam Army Corps of Engineers told me that we need to get a survey conducted today to figure out how much land we've lost in order to proceed forward with the proceedings that we have. And I'm not against development. I'm all for it, as a matter of fact. I want to be a part of it. I want to turn that place into some sort of tourist attraction for the family. I, I want to develop it, it's just that I'm restricted with my means right now. So, don't get me wrong, I like development, but as a gentleman I heard say that before, Mr. Go, we responsible development. You know, let's keep our, our place pristine, and this is a good example, over ten years of this ongoing fighting this battle of trying to get things corrected. So again, I thank you for taking the time of hearing me and the residents of Talafofu regarding this development, and keep up the good work, senators.
Thank you, Mr. Ojoa. And just for the information of everyone, uh, since we're recording this, um, we're gonna try and get it put on the legislative channel over the weekend so that it'll run and, um, the people will be able to see it from, from home. Okay, um, so that's all the Talafofu residents that have signed up. Yes, sir. Mr. Joe? Wayne? I hope you don't mind, but I'm gonna, I mean, and I really appreciate that you have it in writing because we're gonna go back and, uh, really take a good look and see what we can do. However, I do need to at least, uh, you know, on, on one of your suggestions, uh, it dealt with the question of why aren't the federal counterparts included in this, in this bill? And of course, I know that you know the answer to that. We have no authority or jurisdiction to be able to mandate the federal government to do anything, and that's the difficult. We can ask and we can request, right? But to be able to put it in law, we can't do that. Or even if we did, then it really amounts to nothing. So I think, uh, again, with that kind of input, it might be productive to request or ask them to be involved, but we can't force them or mandate them to do anything. And that's the sad truth on that one.
Correct. Correct. I think that's where I was leaning to, is that if, uh, you know, um, my grandfather always told me, and so has my dad, uh, he always said, uh, you know, it's never, uh, what you say, it's how you say it.
That's right.
You know, I can, you can ask me to pick up, hey, pick that up, but if you look at me and say, it's more meaningful and it means a lot more. So I think if, with the right approach and we, uh, approach the situation to the military with the right demeanor, I'm sure that they'll be willing to bridge the gap between the civilians of Guam and the military. I know you're all for that, so I'm sure that they're for the same thing, too.
No doubt. And there might be even perhaps where, and again, I know that these, uh, uh, Southern Soil Conservation efforts, uh, have a close tie with the federal government, and so I think through those kind of, of interactions that we might be able to request it. But that was just a direct response to your question, how come we can't include them in the bill? We can ask, but we can't mandate, and, uh, that's just that. But I think there may be opportunities. You're right. If we ask properly and we use the right channels and the, you know, and, and the right vehicles to do that, they might be very interested in how we move forward with the development of our land. But thank you, Mr. Ojoa.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Ojoa. I, I don't have any questions. Great. Thank you very much. So the next one that has signed up is Mr. Adrian Gogui. And I assure you that, correct, come on. I assure you that, uh, all this effort that you're taking and following us around, uh, will be, um, at least we'll be able to hear it so that others can, uh, can also hear it.
Thank you, Chor Manata. Okay, uh, by the time we get to Yumarak, I think we'll be able to recite the Unifersi pledge together, right? So my name is Adrian Gogui. I'm a resident of Chalanpawu and Mayor Taitugui and the residents of Talapofu. Thank you for opening up your village and allowing us to come in and speak here at the public hearing. I am a member of Save Southern Guam, as you can see my plaque up here. Uh, Save Southern Guam is a grassroots organization. We are in favor of responsible development. We are in favor of enforcing laws that protect the seashore and the coastal beauty of our island, most especially in the pristine area of Southern Guam. Save Southern Guam is also in support of Bills Three-Sixty-Five and Three-Sixty-Six. Three-Sixty-Five puts the Municipal Planning Council right there in the hornets' nest. Three-Sixty-Six puts a hope to the development until the master plan is developed. And I really appreciate your efforts, senators, because now that the word is out on the street, if this thing moves forward and becomes law, is it gonna create a mad dash for developers to submit their applications before these two bills become law? Remains to be seen. Remains to be seen. But this is the way forward. Mayor Taitugui said this sets the framework. And it's not just for Southern Guam, although this is the last pristine area, you know, past Pago Bay. Pago Bay Bridge is the gateway to the south. And as you follow the media, you know that they're gonna erect two monstrosities over there, eleven and twelve stories, that is absolutely not compatible with the community. Mr. Lohan talks about enforcement. That's what we were talking about during the last two public hearings that Melissa and, you know, yesterday. I gave my personal experiences. The public hearing here, bringing it to the village, is where it needs to happen. Why? Because any other setting outside of the village where the grassroots are at is that, it's gonna fall on deaf ears. As was the case with the public hearings and the hearings on the Pago Bay Marina Resort. Overwhelming opposition. Folks attended the public hearing, the meetings up at the Guam Land Use Commission. And despite, despite Chapter Sixty-One from Guam Code Annotated Title Twenty-One, zoning law, it says, for example, in an R-two area, you can build three stories not to exceed thirty feet. That language is very clear. And it further states that if you wanna have an exemption to the height, it says, if you wanna build a hotel, you're allowed to build a hotel seven stories not to exceed seventy-five feet. So between three-story multifamily, multi, uh, residential, R-two zone or hotel zone according to our Chapter Sixty-One, three stories not to exceed thirty feet, seven stories not to exceed seventy-five feet, no matter how you slice it, eleven stories and twelve stories fit for way outside of what is permissible by law. And it's that kind of action by our government that's really, really telling of what could happen to the remainder of Guam in the south. Look at all of the iconic bays from Pago Bay, Tagatzang, Ilik, Talapofu, Inalahan, Melasu, Yumarak, Sedisela, where we want to add yet. Can you imagine eleven and twelve-story hotels, monstrosities around our iconic areas? You know, when I wanna relax and take a, you know, exit the central area, I take a drive down south. But the gateway to the south begins at Pago Bay. That's just the seed that's gonna grow wildly and out of control. And you know, senators, you heard me speak before, I'm very passionate about this. Very passionate. We need to return power to the people, meaning we need our voices to be heard, because I'm telling you, I'm respectfully saying, all of our concerns for the infrastructure, the environment, the cultural ties, fell on deaf ears, cultural ties. They unearthed, according to the archaeologist's report in the developer's application for the Pago Bay Marina Resort, going back to two thousand and eight, I mean, they were grading and unearthing Pago Bay, cutting into the land, eleven of our ancestral remains. That was a condition and a notice of action, that they must have a proper reburial. You know, we talk about saving Paga? Great. We talk about the wildlife refuge over there on Northwest Field, with Tidem Point. But in our very own backyards, beyond earth, what was reported by Mark and the archaeologists, eleven remains of our ancestors. And during the meetings back in February, March, it was so unbelievably, they said the remains were probably on some shelf at the University of Guam, maybe even parks alike. That goes back to two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine timeframe. And the reason why I point this out, the reason why I point this out, Mr. Lohan said it eloquently, where is the enforcement of these conditions? This is codified in law. I'm not a lawyer, but if you disagree with the Guam Land Use's approval, in this case of a variance application, your only recourse, our only recourse, the residents of Guam, is to a judicial review. A judicial review, which, according to Adrian Gogui's simple education, should have been protected according to Chapter Sixty-One. Last night, I said subsection Six One Two One Six, I stand corrected, is section Six One Six One Seven. It talks about the variance requirements. We gotta hit all those five requirements for variance. You talk about the height limit, three stories not to exceed thirty feet, seven stories to hit a hotel not to exceed seventy-five feet. They didn't follow the law. This is the government that should be looking out for the general interest of the people. And their approval just seems unfair to the rest of us islanders, to Mr. Ojoa, who's trying to develop his land, what he's trying to do within the constraints of the law. Okay? So when we get to Yumarak, I hope we can recite Unifersi pledge. If our government can't take care of us, the people of Guam, who are we gonna turn to? This is codified in law. This is not something that Save Southern Guam and the villagers of Talapofu are making up. We are trying to follow the law, and we expect the government to be protecting us and enforcing the law. Last night, I talked about the permitting process and I drew a rig that already collected soil samples. If this is gonna be the telltale sign of how we're gonna have to defend what remains of our island, then I submit it's a foregone conclusion that we've lost the battle before it even started. Because if we can't rely on our government, where are we gonna rely on? In closing, thank you. You will see me tomorrow, and the day after Yumarak. In closing, thank you. You will see me tomorrow, and the day after Yumarak, and Friday at the public hearing. Save Southern Guam, we are for responsible development. We advocate adherence to the laws and the books, not circumventing the law, and building in a bunch of conditions that aren't even enforced. Aren't you doing enforced? Not where the paper it's printed on, not where the paper they affixed their signature, because it means nothing if we cannot enforce it. And I was very, very happy to hear Mr. Lohan speak about the same issues that we've been raising. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gogui. Does anybody have any questions? Um, we, we have, we have other people that have signed up. Jonita Kerr, did you wanna speak? Okay, let me just step forward. Thank you very much, Mr. Gogui. And we had, uh, Celine Cruz. Celine, did you, did you wanna speak? No, okay. All right, Ms. Kerr.
Good evening, senators, residents of Talapofu and Guam. Uh, my name is Jonita Kanga Kerr, and I am an associate professor at Guam Community College. I have been teaching there for almost ten years, going on a decade. I've taught environmental and marine biology and, and chemistry. And, um, I'm also a faculty advisor of the GCC Eagle Warriors. I am also a co-chair of the Tonno Group of the Guam Nature Alliance, and I am a member of the executive board of Save Southern Guam. Um, I am, I don't reside in the south, and I grew up, but I did grow up in the village of Peedy, which is almost south, or some people would consider southern, and it's got a river, it's got a nestuary. Um, I now live in Dedido, but I'm here because of my abiding interest in the natural resources and, um, the special environments of Guam. So as a teacher, um, and as a co-chair of Guam Nature Alliance, I've had the opportunity, and I love this opportunity to take people out, whether they be students or members of the public. I go out to the limestone forests, I do, um, say tours of the limestone forests, I take people, I, I, I take people out to the mangroves at Sasa Bay. Um, I'd like to invite members of the panel to our Guam Nature Alliance Ridge to Reef activity and when we hosted in, or when we, uh, conducted during Fiesta in Tasi in Melazo. Uh, that will be October twenty-second. If you come, uh, we could put you in a kayak where you can, uh, we can take a tour of the mangroves, go up the river, you can put on a snorkeling mask and, um, and snorkel in the bay in Melazo, you can, and explore the river. So, uh, doing these kinds of wonderful outdoor, outdoorsy nature things just really, you know, um, uh, allowed me to come to love and appreciate what I've seen on Guam. And I'm gonna tell you, I didn't always know what was on Guam. And it was because of, uh, my duty as a teacher, I just kinda went out there and started exploring. So if you go out there and start exploring, I mean, I'm sure you'd understand, you know, why I love this island so much. I'm so glad that, um, Mr. Joe and Mr. Lohan spoke about the rivers, um, because, uh, those rivers are generated by watersheds. Now, Southern Guam is, uh, known as the land of the orthogonal rivers. Orthogonal meaning they kind of, um, flow at an angle, and they flow through these angles because they follow the, the natural breaks of the land as it was being built, or built up naturally, earthquakes and so on. But, but these rivers all are generated in watersheds, and, and part of the, um, um, problems that we have with these watersheds, especially in the south, is that they, they are often, well, they've been unfortunately affected by human activities. So these human activities include, um, lighting fires, usually hunters do this, um, off-roading, and then of course, development as, uh, Mr. Lohan and Mr. Joe pointed out. So what this development does is it loosens that soil. So we've lost a lot of topsoil already, and during the rainy season, this topsoil now finds its way into the rivers, and the rivers now carry it out into the ocean. The connection between the ridge, the mountain, and the ocean is one of our, um, is actually our motto or theme with Guam Nature Alliance Ridge to Reef. So that connection there, um, what that sediment does is it, it finds its way out onto the reef, chokes the corals, and then next thing you know, we've got these horrible affected reefs in the south. So, so what, um, what I'm really concerned about is the environmental impact of this development in the south. So let's say, at least for the past ten years, and, and maybe it's gone on for much longer than that, there have been groups who have been trying to mitigate this damage caused in the south. So groups like, uh, the Yumarak Project, um, NOAA has also gone out there. NOAA funds certain projects like tree planting. Uh, the Forestry and Soil Resources Division at Department of Agriculture sponsors tree planting all the time. I mean, I am out there, I'm carrying seedlings and, and, you know, hiking them up the hills and then when we plant them. And so, so what, what this has been doing over the past ten years, it's an attempt, right? To heal the land, to mitigate the damage. And so what I'm worried about is that if, if we have irresponsible development going on in the south, um, and of course, there's the problem of enforcement, what's this gonna do to, you know, to that, is it gonna negate the effects of all that mitigation that's been, that we've been trying to do, that healing that we've been trying to do? So anyway, that's, that's something to think about. A lot of people, students, um, these groups have been involved for years now trying to take care of the south. Um, this, okay, so we have the south with its beautiful scenic vistas, uh, the unspoiled rolling hills, those ocean views, and I think they've remained that way because of the foresight of the people who authored the territorial sea of the people who authored the Territorial Seashore Protection Act of 1974. So, this is what Adrian Gobri has been kind of putting to the forefront. I'm not going to read the text, it's there in GCA. So, I'd like to, I'd like for us to keep that foresight in mind as we, as we get into this process to develop that Southern Development Master Plan. I really like Mr. Joe's suggestion that we, that we don't lift the moratorium until, until that plan is developed. Otherwise, there's a, there's a big loophole. So, those 365 and 366, so I think, I think they're stuck in the right direction, that's what SSG thinks. However, 366 falls short in that it provides those loopholes that developers can and will likely take advantage of, specifically Sections 3 and 4A of Bill 366. So, Save Southern Guam recommends removing those loopholes, replacing them with language that provides residents not just a voice in what happens in their villages, but also meaningful influence in the form of village municipal planning councils. So, we've heard maybe some concerns of the village municipal planning councils perhaps lack the expertise that, let's say, the GLUC has. But I'd like to say that that's not necessarily true. We have, all the time, we have people who are well-educated, making really good decisions, and I think that these people can be found in our various villages, and I think Adrian is a testament to that, and people who sit on Save Southern Guam are a testament to that. People who come and agree with us are a testament to that. So, as our, as our population becomes more educated, I don't think that we really have to worry about finding people who are with the expertise to sit on a village municipal I think the only thing that would probably be an exception, because I, you know, there's, you said you, I mean, there, there might be exemptions to Bill 366, and you mentioned that there might be cases where a developer might want to, there might be a reason for a developer to hurry up and start moving on, on a project. And the only things I can think of are, you know, emergencies to the safety of southern residents, or protection of their lands, or something like that. Except for one other thing, and that might be when a resident would like to develop their land for the good of the people. And that might be, for instance, I know of a resident who wants to donate land to the people of Guam, and he wants to build or develop an arboretum. Now, would the moratorium affect something like that? I hope not. You know, he doesn't plan to build huge buildings or anything like that, he really wants to plant trees. So, I mean, I think that exemptions of those types can be put into the bill, and things that aren't necessarily going to be a huge load of concrete on the environment. Okay, so I'd like to thank you for listening to my testimony.
Will we be able to get a copy of that?
Yes, and I'm going to send a revised copy.
Okay, fine, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. That completes the list of individuals who have signed up. So, if any of the panel members have any questions or comments, closing comments, I'm going to go ahead and, before we close, then, Senator?
Well, as to the last, I'm sorry, I didn't get your last name.
This is Kerr.
Kerr. Kerr, it is Kerr. I appreciate your testimony, I really do. Actually, Mr. Gobri, I appreciate your passion and testimony there as well. There is one comment, and it's come out several times. I mean, I know when I went to the Agate meeting, it came up, and it deals with Bill 1, 366, Section 4A, and which basically is that land use applicants that have already been approved and are within the timelines of law by law to commence construction or attain requirement buildings, they basically are exempt from this whole thing. And I know there had been several people who said, you know, take that out. And I'll have to take a look at the, at the legal issue on this, but the technical term legally would be the ex-facto issue of passing a law that affects something that has already been approved, or a contract has already been made. And so, again, there's, there would have to be a fine line look at whether we can do that or not, right? Eliminate something that's already been approved. It's a legal, yeah, ex-facto, and it's just something you'd have to, you know, we'd have to take a look at. That being said, though, I do appreciate the testimonies that you have made, and I'm sure we will all take a look at, at these bills and maybe find out how do we, if possible, even expand upon. I mean, I know a lot of things have been said, starting with Mr. Luhan and everybody else, in terms of the enforcement of it. Unfortunately, or fortunately, I guess depending on how you look at it, we would try, have to try to figure out how do we perhaps enforce the enforcement? Because really, our, our role as policymakers is basically to set the policy, and it's on the executive branch then to really administer it. And, you know, and I just have to make that clear, because I think sometimes the legislature and the senators get attacked for things that probably are not within our jurisdiction to do. And, and so I just need to make that clear, and just to make sure there's an understanding. Because going forward, to be able to work together, again, making sure you understand what role we play in all this and what we can do, there are certain things we can do, but there are certain things that we cannot do. And, Mr. Luhan?
Senator?
Yes, sir.
There used to be a law, citizens' right to sue. Okay, that was amended. It used to be that any citizen, this is, I think, filed GCA Section 7107 or 7108. And that was amended, and now, it, you know, before it was amended, any citizen can take any agency to court. Yeah. That was amended so that only a lawyer now can, can, you know, represent the citizen. I wish that you could revisit that. Okay, so that any citizen, you know, like, like Save Southern Guam, would be able to take the Guam Land Use Commission to, to task, to court. You know, if the Attorney General won't represent the people of the south, then they would have the ability to be able to go to court and have standing to sue.
I appreciate that, Mr. Luhan. I believe you still have standing to sue. You know, again, you just wouldn't have, you just wouldn't have the availability of using the Attorney General, because the Attorney General's role is to defend the government of Guam.
But, you know, I reviewed the statute because I wanted to sue.
Yes, sir.
You know, government agency.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I've spoke to, I've spoken to, to, you know, some of the government agencies, and I wanted to take them to court, but then, when I went back and reviewed the citizens' right to sue statute, it was amended. It used to be that, like I said, any citizen can take a government agency to court. Now, it requires a lawyer.
I appreciate that, and I know that you know some good lawyers.
Yeah, but I want to be able to do it myself, and, and so can, you know, like, the Save the South group can also do it themselves. Why do we need a lawyer to take action?
I, you know, and I'll have to take a look at that, Mr. Luhan, but I believe that anybody can go and represent on a pro se. In other words, as an individual, you go and represent yourself. Of course, I think it's inadvisable to go down that road because of the various nuances of the law and the requirements that, that it takes to be able to make the right argument on, in the best interest of your case. And I, and I'm not sure, like I said, in terms, I'll take a look at that statute and see if that is indeed the case, but I believe any citizen can actually take, take action and file in court.
Again, it's inadvisable to go without a lawyer. With the caveat that, you know, a lawyer represents, jailhouse a fool for a client.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Luhan.
Yes, Senator Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank everyone for their testimony. Mayor and Guam Land Management, thank you for, for being here. I, I just wanted to point out real quickly, as I've been pointing out, as we go through the, our southern communities, and some of the guidelines that are, are built in to the developing the master plan. And some of the areas, for example, of calls for subcommittees or committees in infrastructure, including electricity, water, sewage, roads, communications, tourism, archaeological preservation, ecological, and there's a list that goes on. So, I just ask folks to be, try to get familiarized with the Southern Development Master Plan Task Force and the guidelines that are here. It's in Public Law 19-38. We can definitely get contacts, your contacts provide copies of that. I share that because I'm, I'm sure after this measure is passed and signed into law, that we'll, we'll have to move with convening the task force. And it's good to see individuals that are, are sharing their passion as we go in each, through each village, about how they would like to see their communities grow. And there's one item here that talks about population enhancement, one of the areas. Maybe not so much in Ipan Talafofu, as you just pointed out, some of the ongoing residential developments that are taking place, but as you see in Maleso and in Arahan and Yamara, I mean, there is a, a, a huge loss of population, and a lot of that is migrating central north. And so, as we look at the Southern Development Master Plan and having the perspective of some of these areas that we're pointing out, and looking at what we value most in the south of our history and our culture and our heritage, and how those areas can turn into economic opportunities, that we definitely address population enhancement, keeping our families in our homes in the south. And I point that out, and hoping that these areas, as the mayor is part of the key to the task force, or the southern mayors are key to the task force, that these individuals that are here and that will participate in these subcommittees, and one of the areas that they feel will be key, that they could provide their expertise or whatever their input in these areas. But I thank you all, I, as we go through the communities, I've learned a lot about your communities and, and what's important to you and your area, so thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Senator Morrison. So, if there's no other testimonies or questions from the committee, then we're going to go ahead, and this committee will stand in recess, and it is now 8:00 AM. Eight PM.